Good evening. This regular meeting of June 12th, 2017 of the Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton.
Mr. Bytine.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Seager.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here. All right. We are on our own for the pledge of allegiance, so I hope you remember the words.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May 8th and the strategic planning meeting on May 22nd, 2017, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May 8th and the strategic planning meeting on May 22nd, 2017, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to board salutes.
I have one here. We'd like to congratulate Dubuque Senior High School's Maddie Hawkins, who is the 2017 Iowa high school girls' golf champion. Maddie shot a four-under par, 67, in her final round, bringing her total 36-hole score to 141, which qualified or equated to the fourth-best 36-hole score in state meet history. As a team, the Dubuque Senior Girls Rams finished third at state at the event. Congratulations to Maddie and the entire Rams team on accomplishing an outstanding state.
Great. You shoot 67 most of the time, don't you, Jim?
No. Oh, Jim.
No, not quite. Not quite. Maybe add one in front of that. I have a board salute as well. Board salute goes out to Hae Bin Han, who just completed eighth grade at Roosevelt Middle School, for representing her school, the district, and Dubuque proudly at the Scripps National Spelling Bee. Hae Bin was the winner of the Dubuque Regional Bee and competed among an elite group in Washington, DC. She was sponsored by the Telegraph Herald. Kudos to her on a job well done. We are confident she knows how to spell "success."
Mr. President, I also have a board salute. Several of us here on the dais attended the graduations on June 3rd. So a board salute goes out to over 377 graduates from Dubuque Senior High School and 383 graduates from Hempstead High School who received their diplomas. Both ceremonies were fitting of the honor these students and their families deserve. Kudos also go to the many staff members who worked to ensure that the ceremony goes off with a hitch. I don't know if you're aware of all the backhanding of the diplomas and to keep them aligned with the students in itself is a major undertaking. The day was one we worked towards during a student's entire life in the Dubuque Community School District. We wish these new graduates much success as they move into the next phase of their lives.
Here, here.
Very good.
Great. Thank you. Any others?
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are in open forum. Any persons wishing to address the board may do so at this time.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items that we'd like to remove for further separate consideration?
I'll pull the personnel report.
Okay. Any others? All right. Why don't we go ahead? All in favor of that motion, would the personnel report removed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Personnel report.
Just want to take a minute and highlight, sort of had some dominos taking place, as you all know. Nancy Bradley retired after 47 years with the district. We hired Cindy Stephens, principal of Carver Elementary School, to replace her. And then Joe Maloney, principal of Marshall Elementary School, was moved to Carver, which left us an opening at Marshall Elementary School. We were very excited to announce that Sheila Schmidt will be the next principal. Sheila has a long history in education, was a teacher, I don't have the resume for me, for about 19 years. Was also an instructional coach for our district for a number of years, then left to be an elementary principal in the Western Dubuque School District. And we had a great pool of candidates, and we were very excited to bring Sheila back to our district as the next principal. We had a great pool of applicants, great interview process with a lot of the staff members from Marshall, so very excited to have Sheila rejoin us in the district.
Great. How about a motion to accept the personnel report?
I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the personnel report as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Brings us to Facility Support Services Committee report. Mr. Bytine.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're lucky this evening to have Mr. Dave Britton with us from FRK Architects and Engineers, who is going to give us an update on the pool project. David?
Thank you very much again. Dave Britton with FRK Architects, Western Moonee, Iowa. Appreciate your time this evening. Would just like to give you an update. We'll talk a little bit about the process that we went through, programming, site evaluation, conceptual design. We'll show you some sites that we considered and some discussions that we had, and look at how the committee narrowed the options, and make a recommendation this evening for where the pool would be located. So, first of all, we looked at a number of sites in the district. Washington Middle School was one of those sites. You can see here, just by the pure size of an eight-lane, 25-yard pool, we're unable to fit it on that site. And some of the other areas that are just to the west of the building were areas that we really couldn't disturb, open playfield areas, there was some terrain challenges there as well. So, that one was ruled out fairly quickly. We looked at the Roosevelt site, and we've got a number of options that we looked at here. We looked at some different sized pools, and mainly one location, located west of your existing gymnasium there, with a separate entrance, potential for some additional parking related to the pool addition. And so we looked at a number of things here, one in which the pool, where you entered, the pool was actually depressed down to the locker room level below your gymnasium with the seating on the main level. We also looked at one where we pulled the building addition away from the existing. You've got some existing utilities coming in there, and so this option, pulled the building out a little further. And then we looked at also one in which we had an eight-lane, 25-yard, plus an additional three-lane, 25-yard, warm-up and cool-down pool as well. And this one, the pool, was at the main deck level, at the main entry level, and you actually went upstairs to the seating that was above locker rooms. Probably one of the biggest concerns that we had was soils conditions at Roosevelt. Based on what you experienced with that actual building and with Carver, just directly to the north, there was a significant soils issues and costs associated with that. And so, one of the largest concerns is putting a large vessel out there holding water in an area that could have settlement, cracking, which you're experiencing currently at Roosevelt could be a real issue there. So, we did do some costing for that particular scheme. We'll show you some at the Hempstead site here, but we, with the committee, we indicated that let's cost out one for Roosevelt that's similar in water area to a Hempstead addition that you'll see here in a minute. And this does not take into account any soils conditions that we might run into. So we were already at about $8 million with this one, which puts us about $1 million over what your allocated budget is for the project. And even without being over that much, I think the committee's feeling was that soils conditions really, really steered us away from that particular site, just too many concerns with issues that you might have there. So, we looked at a number of different options than at the Hempstead site. This first one was a scenario where we expanded the existing pool to the west, removing the west wall and extending it over near the kitchen. The issue that we ran into there, of course, is that you really don't gain much space because you don't gain much length. You know, the length stays the same, your deck areas are very narrow, and so we don't gain a whole lot there for the amount of cost that would be incurred to do that. And it doesn't help your seating area very much either. So, committee didn't feel like that was a very viable option. We also looked at what happens if you build it in the courtyard that is existing. And although it will fit, getting materials and things in there would be very difficult. You'd have to lift everything over the building, basically, because there's no open way to get into the courtyard. And we would have to erect a two-hour fire separation wall between this addition and the rest of the building, which would close off all of your windows on both floors for any of those classrooms that look into the courtyard. So, again, although it fits, it wasn't a very feasible option. Locker room areas, we looked at utilizing the existing locker rooms, but you have to cross a fairly major corridor to get between those and the pool, so that was not a real desirable situation either. So then we looked at an addition option, site plan here that shows where that might sit, and that was located north of the existing pool, in the parking lot area, and just west of the gymnasium that was added recently. So with this particular scheme, we were able to fit a, what's called a stretch 25, and that is a 25-yard, eight-lane pool with a movable bulkhead. And that allows for a diving well, that can be dedicated diving well at one end, and you can also utilize that for practice swimming as well. We've looked at an option, this one is currently 60 feet wide. An additional 15 feet would allow you to swim cross-course, meaning you could get more lanes and could swim then across the pool, so that you could get probably, I think, in the neighborhood of 12 to 13 lanes for practice. Now, that does add 15 feet to the pool, to the building, and I think we estimated that to be around $1 million additional to the project. And we'll show you some costing here in a moment on this particular scheme. But that was one of the things that was talked about with the committee. And so this, just to talk a little bit more about this scheme, this puts the pool deck at the same level as your current pool deck. So it is down 12 foot 8 into the ground, allows you to use your current event entry that's on the north side that was added recently, allows us to utilize the existing restrooms then, and the existing concessions that you have currently. And then we make a connection with a corridor across the north side of that gymnasium there, and that brings you into the upper seating level, which is at that main entry level. So the pool is pushed down, and then we're looking at making a connecting corridor from your existing locker rooms, then connect directly to that pool, so that you can utilize those, which we understand were also recently renovated as well. So there's some savings with this scheme, just because we're utilizing some of the existing facilities that you already have in place, allows us to get some larger water area as well. So there were some real advantages that the committee thought would be involved.
It also allows for the use of the new gym space, for breakout space for a larger meet teams, team areas, that sort of thing, too, so.
And I think you mentioned this, and the access to the other locker rooms, which, if you have a large meet, you know, that you can expand into the existing.
Right. Yeah. Good point there. So we connect to the existing locker rooms that are currently right off the pool, but we're also able to connect to the locker rooms that are underneath the auxiliary gym as well. And so those can access the pool as well at that same level. So there were some real advantages to being able to utilize existing space that you had, and I think that's what allowed us to get some larger water area with this particular scheme. So we did do some cost estimating. We reached out to a local contractor and asked them to verify, are we in the ballpark on our costing? The total project cost, we're estimating right now, is just under $7.5 million. They came in a little lower with theirs, and so I think we feel pretty confident that we're in the ballpark as far as the budget on this particular scheme. So the committee then, at our last meeting, talked about some comparisons between the Hempstead site and the Roosevelt site, and we've listed those here. We've talked about most of those already this evening, and I think the one, you probably can't see it in bold there, but the last one on the Roosevelt side was the porous soils conditions, and that's, I think, what really steered us away from that site and toward the Hempstead site. And I think there's some advantages also to having it at the current location, just from a curriculum standpoint as well. And that was all discussed in the committee level as well. The one downside, if it is a downside with the Hempstead one, is loss of parking. So there is some parking that we'll lose out there. There's some parking we'll lose during construction if we proceed with the scheme, but that would be restored, and we're estimating, I think we're around 76 spaces that we would lose out there. But again, I think the committee thought that that was something that could be dealt with, and it wasn't something that was too detrimental to that particular location. So, from a timeline standpoint, we're here, basically at the end of schematic design, and we're looking to move into design development. This schedule essentially mirrors the schedule that was in the RFP, looking at completing the project in the fall or winter probably of 2019, if we can start construction in 2018 after school is out, so that we don't lose parking too soon. And so I think we're on schedule at this point, and I would open it up for any questions. And I guess one thing to add, basically, end of schematic design, and we're looking for the board's approval to move into design development for the project, where we'll bring Aquatics Consultant back and MEP consultants as well, and start getting into more detail.
I'd like to make a comment as one of the board members representing on the committee. I've been very impressed with the entire process.
Yes.
We had all the swim coaches there, we looked at the program, and we looked at sites. You may wonder, why were we looking at Washington? Why were we looking at... But we wanted to be sure that there was no opportunity for regret, that we did not consider every possible opportunity. And even though it may be obvious that if we wanted it at Hempstead, you know, we did due diligence. We made sure that it would belong there, and clearly, that's where the swim program exists in the high schools. So although there had been opportunity to perhaps develop something at the middle school, we still can do that.
Right.
It doesn't prohibit us from doing that. But I think we're all very, very pleased with the outcome of that process and feel comfortable that it's the right place to put the pool.
I, too, would like to just kind of reiterate what Craig mentioned a little bit. Hempstead makes a lot of sense to me, and I'm glad to see that we did investigate all the other sites. It makes sense that we have a competitive team there already, even though senior has to travel over there. That's been happening for 50 years. So, then it's also that we do not lose a season here at all by this expansion.
Right.
It's close to our budget. And I think the real selling point to me was the locker room, the fact that we have locker rooms there already. We don't have to build special locker rooms like we would have to have done at Roosevelt. I can envision, though, the entryway there. It's going to be like, it's going to be very nice. It's going to be auditorium to the left, gymnasium, and nadatorium to the right.
Jim learned a new word.
No, no, no.
I was going to use that.
I looked at University of Iowa. They call their, they don't call it Aquatic Center, they call it a nadatorium.
Yeah. Right.
I just want to echo with Jim, and Craig had said, I've been at all the meetings as well, and I am very proud to say that we looked at all angles, we did our due diligence, like Craig said, and I'm happy that we're able to use the amenities that are just built new at Hempstead. And like, the biggest thing is, the coaches, you know, they're fully involved in all this decision-making and brainstorming, and so they both feel very engaged and are happy with what we're moving forward with.
Right. I guess I don't know if I said officially, but we're recommending the Hempstead High School site.
Yeah. So are we.
I think the Hempstead site covers all of our bases, I won't use it in my other. But it gives us much better deck space. It gives us the functionality of a separated diving well, which can be used as a warm-up lane during a meet when diving is not in session. It keeps it tied to the curriculum at the high school level. It gives us another use, or third, fourth, fifth use for the concession stand, the ability to concession stand. The locker rooms are a big issue, the breakout space of the other gyms for larger meets. So really excited, and quite honestly, the price point was pretty near what our budget was, and I was nervous that maybe when we did this work, that the price would be something we couldn't afford, and it is, it's on target.
Ken, you may want to mention the current pool and what will happen to that space.
Well, at this point, we don't necessarily have a plan for that current space, but one of the things that I'm glad was mentioned was, when we looked at the extension of the current pool, that really meant us going without a pool for two men's and two women's seasons. And where that practice, where those meets would have been held, that would have been a huge thing to choreograph, probably would have been late-night practices at an existing pool. So this way, one will stay open until the day, the other one, then it will close, the other one will open. And currently, it is segregated enough in location that it can be closed off and drained, and will probably set dormant for a few years while we figure out, A, what it should be, and B, have resources that would be needed to turn it into something else anyway.
Yeah. Currently, we don't have any costs in there to decommission that pool. We can look at that, you know, and see how far we want to take that, but that space would certainly be available for future use. And yeah, I'm glad you mentioned the loss of the swim seasons. That was also a big selling point for the addition as opposed to expanding the existing.
I have another question. I know you've built a lot of pools, and do swimming pools come with any type of warranty at all, like, or...
So, there's typically a one-year warranty for the building, and so that would be under the contractor's responsibility, and that's going to be typical of any building that you've built to date. As far as specific warranties, there'll be warranties on pumps and equipment that are associated with the pool. Those, I don't have any detail off the top of my head as to what the length of those warranties would be, but much like your HVAC equipment, you would have warranties associated with those, much like you would the pool equipment as well.
So what about a crack?
Typically, there's not a warranty for a crack that I'm aware of in there. What we've been doing for our Aquatics Consultant is the one that actually designs the vessel itself, and they do all the structural engineering for the vessel as well. And we're typically doing those all out of cast, concrete, and the reinforcing and the detailing in those is pretty extensive to avoid cracks and potential for water leak. And we have, you know, over the years that we've built a number of pools and we've used this pool consultant, we've never had an issue with cracking to date.
Thank you.
With that, unless there's anything else, I'll go to the motion. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move the Board of Education authorize the board president to sign the authorization to proceed into the design development phase for the pool replacement project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the board president to sign the authorization to proceed into the design development phase for the pool replacement project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Yay.
Yay.
Hey, we're moving.
Six years of waiting.
Yeah, it's only been six years.
Six years of waiting.
All right. I'll move on, Mr. President, if you'll allow me. I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented. Discussion?
Phil's not with us tonight. It is in line with all of our other contracts. It's a 2% total package increase, so it does include a move to the new health insurance, which all of our employees now will be covered in that policy, and it is a 2% total package, as I mentioned, which is where all of our groups have ended up.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve change order number six to Conlon Construction on the senior high school renovation project in the increased amount of $32,103.91.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number six to Conlon Construction on the senior high school renovation project in the increased amount of $32,103.91. Any discussion?
I mean, we have change orders from time to time. Bill, do you want to summarize this very, very briefly?
Good evening, board members. Just briefly, a lot of this is unforeseen conditions. You may recall, the original kitchen was built in senior 1988 on that west side. Then it was moved to the east side, and during that move, there was a renovation there to change it into the existing facts area, and so a lot of the drawings weren't as accurate as we would hope they'd been. And unfortunately, we just are experiencing some unforeseen situations, things that were not documented, things that we're finding have to be addressed. And then there's a small $3,500 change order that the city's requiring for grease interceptors and some changes there for the plumbing to meet that code. But it's just one of those things with this type of building, we knew it was going to be complicated, and there would be some of these existing unforeseen conditions, and we budgeted appropriately for it, so it's not a surprise.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the professional services master agreement with IIW PC for survey, engineering, design, construction-related services for various minor district improvement projects not to exceed $5,000 per project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the professional services master agreement with IIW PC for survey, engineering, design, and construction-related services for various minor district improvement projects not to exceed $5,000 per project. Any discussion?
I just would mention, I think it suffices to say that we have an ongoing relationship with IIW to provide these services. This allows us to get to resolution faster, more efficiently, like keeping them on retainer, and that you've set that ceiling of $5,000 per project. If it exceeds that, then additional board approval might be necessary.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Move the Board of Education authorize payment of final June 2017 bills subject to post audit by the board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize payment of final June 2017 bills subject to post audit by the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And finally, I move the Board of Education set the date, time, and location as July 17th, 2017, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a public hearing on the question of participation in the instructional support program and related property tax levy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education set the date, time, location as July 17th, 2017, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a public hearing on the question of participation in the instructional support program and related property tax levy. Any discussion?
Just briefly, our instructional support levy is a levy that was first passed in the district, I believe. I don't have that date, but more than 15 years ago. It's what brought all-day, everyday kindergarten. Prior to that, it had been half-day kindergarten. So those dollars are used to support some teaching positions in primarily kindergarten-age level. age level. But it's also for structural materials. So, when we buy a new math series, social studies series, language art series, we purchase those through our instructional support levy. Some technology occasionally is paid for on instructional support levy. So, it's a significant fund for us, for operation. The actual levy doesn't expire for another year and a half. We're bringing it a year early simply because there is not a school board election the following year. And elections cost us in the neighborhood of $15,000. And so, we want to do this renewal election at the same time as we do a school board election so that people are there to vote for multiple issues at the same time and not have to make a second trip out next fall.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Ed Programs Policy Strategy Committee report.
We have, we did not have a meeting. The next meeting is going to be June 20th or 19th. So, nothing to report at this time.
Okay. All right. Brings us to new business.
I move that the Board of Education expel student number 710654 from attending school in the Dubuque Community School District pursuant to a waiver of hearing signed on May 18, 2017. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education expel student number 710654 from attending school in the Dubuque Community School District pursuant to waiver of hearing signed on May 18, 2017. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 803519 at this time. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 803519 at this time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion likewise carries. Brings us to board member comments, concerns? Any?
No.
All right. How about from administration?
Just a quick reminder that our meeting in July is not on our traditional second Monday. It will be the 17th of July because of conflicts of holiday and stuff. So, just don't want anybody showing up a week early.
No worries there.
And summer school started this morning. We're very excited to have summer school kicked off. I was at Kennedy this morning, a lot of really excited, eager faces. They have had a week off of summer and I think that some of them are relieved to be back in the, in classrooms. And it's very nice there. It's a hot day, but the air conditioning's working very well at Kennedy.
Yeah, it's good.
So, you're in a good, appropriate learning environment. So, excited to have that happening again.
Do you know, did we have, were our numbers up this summer or about the same?
Cindy, I think they're about the same. We will know a lot more after the first week. We have kids who come the first day or two. And what we really look for is, okay, who's back the second week? And so, we're hoping that they're actually up there as far as the participation for the duration.
And we're talking close to 200 kids, right?
In that ballpark. That's where we started.
Great. All right. Hearing nothing else, we're adjourned. Thank you.